Colonel, Board of Selectmen's meeting is Wednesday, September 18th, to order. Please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all here tonight to listening of matters as those reasonably anticipated by their chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the law. This meeting may be recorded for use on the Internet and also on our local cable. Okay, public errands, appointments, first thing on the agenda, welcome everybody here tonight, is the application for transit, vendor's license, Sunday entertainment license by the Buick Voice Foundation for a car show located 335 West Santa Street, October 6, 2019.
Motion to approve the application and waive any fees.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, so voted. All right, we got an application for a garage license by Hector's Auto Repair Family, Kurt's (cough) Specialist located at 55 Trentbike Street. Okay, I met Hector, he's down there, maybe can tell you exactly what you're gonna do up there and, uh, you certainly know Kurt, he's been up there for years there.
Yeah.
So just tell us a little bit what you're gonna do there and...
Yeah, we're just gonna try to do general repairs, you know, brakes, sun alignments, help people change, you know, change tires and pretty much about in general, you know, maintenance on the car.
A general repair?
Correct.
Maintenance on the car.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and your hours of operation up there or...
Yes, from eight thirty to five Monday to Friday and Saturdays night to one or twelve.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, experience in the automotive field there?
Yeah, actually I went to school for it, you know, and it's always been passionate working on cars all the time, you know, in different shops and, but also, you know, my lifetime career has been a chef also, so, so I'm pretty pleased to have, you know, two things that I can...
So you get your car repaired and you get a good meal too, huh? That's pretty good, huh?
Right.
Board members, do you have any, any questions?
Just, is this, is your business any different than the former business as far as the scope of the operation?
Well, I have experience on working on cars, so, I had the, like I say, a blessing to, that I can do other, other stuff, you know, you know, support myself, my family.
I was more looking at, are, will there, you be adding more services, are the hours very different from the previous owner or pretty much the same type of business?
I'm pretty much a starter because I was gonna be myself, you know, so, but yeah, I like to bring it up to the next level, you know, and maybe, you know, in the future maybe to have maybe a, a one or two people there, you know, so that we can bring, you know, the good work, you know, for the town, you know.
Thank you.
Anthony, you got any comments?
I do not, I'll make a motion to approve and as presented.
Let's hear from David, David, you got any comments or anything on it?
All the paperwork is saying all the inspections have been done, no objections from the office.
Okay, now, a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay, welcome to West Virginia Order and good luck up there.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations. That's gorgeous.
Okay, application for one day liquor license, entertainment license by Friends of West Virginia Library, a beer festival located at 80 Howard Street, October 5, 2019. Okay, this is something that they did last year and it worked out all right and they had no complaints or anything else, so...
No, I didn't hear any complaints, they were successful.
It's like a fundraiser for them. Anybody have any comments or...
No comments.
Okay, no comments, is there a motion to approve, David?
Nope, I would just ask you to approve and waive the fees as it is a town function.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the one day liquor license and waive all fees.
Second.
Second, any other discussions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess, next one, John, I guess, is on begadding Pearl Road.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I if I scoot up there? Maybe just switch.
I'll get out of your way.
No, you're fine. To start with, let me say, in, in general, I am not against the acceptance of Pearl Road as a public way. That is just a general statement. What I am against is doing it in a process that actually doesn't end up protecting the town. The way it has gone about so far is in violation of the statute. I understand you received a letter from Town Council. In response, I prepared a document which I sent in outlining both case law and statutory support for a completely different conclusion. To quote an ad for a web service, that's not how this works, that's not how any of this works. The Board of Selectmen are the only governing body in this town who can lay out a public way. Now, the argument that was made previously is that because a subdivision control plan had been submitted and the actual physical layout of the street had taken place under the subdivision control law, that that was sufficient to meet the statutory requirements. Case losses absolutely differently. In fact, later on, I've submitted to the Board several plans that are in place in other towns and policies that have been accepted and actually make reference to the fact that acceptance of a subdivision plan road does not grant any rights as a public way. What it comes down to is only this Board can take a look at a private way and say, okay, now we're gonna take the next step. Now we're gonna take that private way that's in existence and we're gonna turn it into a public way. And a vote needs to happen. And that vote never took place on Pearl Road. And I don't know if it took place on Bresciani and I don't know if it took place on any other roads going back for quite some time. The step after that is it needs to be referred to the Planning Board for a report. And before the vote can happen for a final layout of a public way, the Planning Board has either 45 days or prior to 45 days to provide a report, or the Board just waits 45 days and then they can vote at that point. And that next point is to vote to put that layout of a public way, which again, only this Board can do, onto an article of the town meeting. That looked like it took place, but the steps preceding it never happened. The next thing that happens is the town votes on it. And we did vote on it. And actually, if, I believe my document is in the, in the agenda packet?
Everything that you sent is in there.
Okay, thank you very much. If you return to page nine of the document I provided, Article 48, to see if the town will vote to accept in accordance with Chapter 82, Section 22 through 24, which are the governing laws, and I go through them in detail in that document, and please, I, sorry I gave you homework, but there's, they're there to read. You will notice that this article does one thing, and that is to accept Pearl Road as a town way. The second step that must happen after that vote is the town must acquire that land. And in order to do that, an additional vote would have had to be taken. That was not taken at town meeting. The only vote that occurred was to accept the road. To acquire the land and the easement, that vote didn't happen. And I will cite the section of the law relevant, MGL 40, Purchase of Land Conditions Limitations, "But no land easement or right therein shall be taken or purchased under this section unless the taking or purchase thereof has previously been authorized by City Council or by vote of the town." That didn't happen. So even if, assuming arguendo, all the other steps, the statutory requirements had been met, which have not, the town, this Board, has no authority to actually acquire the land or easement in Pearl Road. There was a second vote that needed to happen and it didn't. Now, referring to the Town of Hingham's policy.
That's in there.
Okay. Uh, yep.
There's a lot in here.
Yeah, there is, and I did, I gave you a lot of homework. If, once you get to the Town of Hingham policy, you will, you will notice that the entire policy is, is laid out ahead of time. And, and the takeaway that I want you to leave with is that instead of being in a situation which we are now and which we may have to go back and look at other roadways to determine whether or not they are public or if the policies and statutory requirements were not met, that the town enact a street acceptance policy. It's, it's to the point now where subdivisions are getting created left, right, and center, and they're coming forward and asking to be converted. There needs to be more than just a confused situation. And I, I think it's incumbent upon this Board to draft this policy, and I've provided three examples within this area. And you'll notice if you look at the Town of Hingham, which we still don't have up there yet, the, the first paragraph, sorry, the first sentence of the third paragraph is, "Final approval of a subdivision plan by the Planning Board does not constitute the laying out or acceptance by the town of any street nor entitle the street to such acceptance." And the reason they do this is because they know that the only authority that can do that is the Board of Selectmen, or a Board of Road Commissioners, which we don't have. So that's, that's immaterial at this point. Each of these policies, the one for Hingham, the one for Abington, the one for West Boylston, they all identify the three steps that I previously laid out under the same statutory rubric, which is MGL 82, 21 through 24. These policies have to, these requirements are mandatory, and the Supreme Court, the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts has stated clearly and unequivocally that these are requirements. They're not suggestions, they're not something that can be backfilled by something else that, that may have taken place, like in this instance, by saying in 2011, a subdivision plan was, was provided, so that was enough recording and notice. They all have to be satisfied and met unequivocally. The case which I refer to is L'Oreal v. Keane, and it, it holds pretty clearly that failure to meet any of these statutory requirements invalidates any further actions, such as a town meeting vote. So I understand Town Council has said one thing, however, the Supreme Court and other case law begs to differ, so...
Well, it just come up two weeks ago, John, where was you then?
Recovering from surgery.
Okay, well, yeah, because, you know, we're putting these people through hell over there too, and it's like, you know, the town don't know what they're doing. I, I refer to, to our Planning Board who's done this many, many things, we got our legal counsel, and you say, yeah, in a lot of the things that we do here, you know, our signature is the final thing. But the expertise comes from, from people that are on the highway, that doing the roads and things like that, and as far as, I'm not saying you're wrong, John, because, you know, you, you, you know the law probably more than we do, but we try here and it was the best thing. But being and living up there and going through this hell there and, you know, I don't like to put this to anybody because it just isn't right. I mean, if, if we're doing something that we're not supposed to be doing, hey, I stand to be corrected here. Dave, now, you, you've been involved in this, David, what, what do we do here now? I mean, he's done a one thing, our town attorney is saying another thing, and, and our Planning Board, Hugh Hurley has done this for years, and this is the first time that we've really been questioned. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying you're, you're wrong, John.
Well, you don't have to take my word for it, you just take the word of the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts.
Yeah, right.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
John...
Pop in any time.
When is that, when is that case law from?
L'Oreal v. Keane was from, oh, 1961. Thank you, 61.
And has, has there been similar ca, have there been similar cases heard by the Supreme Court since?
No, lower courts have applied this decision to find the requirement mandatory.
So that's the standing case law?
Yes.
Is the fact pattern for that case similar to the Pearl Road case?
There were two issues in L'Oreal. One of the issues had to do with the filing of the notice with the town clerk seven days prior, the, and the, the language to apply in that. "It establishes a role to secure precision and exactness of description on the part of the selectmen as to the changes which they propose to make. It is material to the voters to know exactly what the proposition is upon which they are to decide." And that goes to that, that Board of Selectmen being the ones to file the notice of laying out a public way, which a street may have already been in existence, which Pearl Road was by the subdivision filed as a plan in 2011. And in, in L'Oreal, a very similar situation took place where they failed to provide that recording with the town clerk. In fact, there's case law that goes back to the 1800s that, that basically states, without filing with the town clerk that particular notice, and also, there's case law that states, without saying why the road is being laid out, it cannot go forward under the process. And, and to rely on the subdivision plan relies on it being a private street, not a public way, which, you know, a report of the selectmen after vote would have provided.
What type of, was that a subdivision in that case?
That particular one, I cannot recall, I think, I believe it was a taking of a particular piece of land. It was, thank you.
So, in eminent domain type of taking?
Well, it did involve a taking, and, and it did address the notice of MGL 8222, which needed to be provided, which is not apparently an issue here, simply because the town was trying to acquire through purchase the fee simple in the interest in Pearl Road, which is another issue. I mean, it, for the most part, an easement would have been just fine. The other question is, did you have authority to take an easement? And, and the answer under 41 is, no, that authority was not given at town meeting. So, even, even if it were a gift of an easement, that would not have been authorized because that vote was not taken at town meeting as well.
So are, is there any case law that's more, let's say, runs parallel with the Pearl Road? Or is, I mean, that one is a taking of a land, and I understand what you're saying, that many parts and elements of the law were applied, in your opinion, or should, in, in your opinion, should be applied the same here, but again, that was a taking and this is a voluntary act on their part?
However, that doesn't negate the notice by the Supreme Judicial Court that the statutory requirements all have to be met. And two of them were not met here. One, the layout by the Board of Selectmen, and two, the filing of that layout of the public way with the town clerk. Whether it has to do with the subdivision, a piece of property being taken by eminent domain, a piece of property that was being gifted, because the statutory requirements were not met, the process is invalid. The vote is null at town meeting. In, in regards to subdivisions, reference was made to 4181 DD in Attorney Gaye's letter, in Town Council's letter, and, and he seemed to cut off the most relevant portion of that section, which is, "The subdivision control law does not grant additional authority to lay out public ways." And, and 81 DD specifically states, "It does not authorize a city or town to lay out or construct any way which may be indicated on any plan of a subdivision until such way has been laid out as a public way in the manner prescribed by law." That law being 82, and that statutory body being the Board of Selectmen doing that vote. So the subdivision control law doesn't grant additional powers to lay out a public way. Again, only the Board can do that.
But I don't think it's an argument of it grants additional powers, it just grants a different method.
No.
From, from what?
No.
Well, hear me out.
Okay.
Hear me out.
Yep.
Okay, so from what David Gaye is, is advising us, is he's saying that in the instance of the law you're quoting and referring to is a private way, a typical private way where you might have one home on it, and in this fact pattern, it's a subdivision we're looking at. So the law is, it's just a different application based on the basis of it. Again, one being a private way where there might be one home and this being a subdivision.
If, if I may refer you to page four of my document, it gets into a Supreme Judicial Court discussion of Dolan v. Board of Appeals of Chatham, and it goes into that very issue about what a subdivision control law does and what a planning board can do. And, and at the very bottom, it says, "A subdivision control law provides no authorization or implication that such approval vest any interest in these ways in the public. The mere recording of a development plan is insufficient to dedicate to the public a way shown on the plan." Because of that, the extension or argument being made that because a 2011 subdivision plan was recorded, that that is sufficient under the conversion of a private street to a public way under, under 82, is, is just not there. I, I understand what you're asking, that a subdivision control law is different than one street, but it doesn't get you there either.
What was the fact pattern in Dolan v. Chat, Chatham? Was that, what was that?
It was a private street in a, in a subdivision plan.
Okay.
And, and the Supreme Judicial Court said, no, that's, that's not the way. The, the principal purpose of the subdivision control plan, and this is the language again of the SJC, is to protect the health and welfare of the community by regulating the laying out and construction of ways in subdivisions providing access to the several lots therein, but which have not become public ways in ensuring sanitary conditions in the subdivisions and in proper cases, parks and open areas. The subdivision control cannot convert one type of street into another, and, and their recordation of, of a subdivision control plan doesn't satisfy the statutory requirements under 82.
Maybe that paragraph was a little misleading, but I, I thought I heard you say a public way that leads on to other public ways. So this is one street, correct? Pearl Road is one street? There's no public ways?
No, I, I never...
Okay, I might have just misheard it.
But subdivision control ways, that has to do with the frontage, that has to do with, with ways that have already been accepted. The subdivision control law doesn't grant a Planning Board the authority to create a public way, just doesn't.
So, we could go back and forth over this all night, and you're confident where you are and on what you've cited, and David Gaye is confident on what he's cited.
Well, if, if I may, Attorney Gaye's letter cites no case law and is based only in opinion. He presents no fact patterns. I present SJC case law, I present, if, if you want, the three different planning policies which actually refer to the invalidity of the recording of, of a private street to become a public way in a subdivision plan. Each, each of these, which are persuasive, they're not controlling, I understand, but if you take a look at these, you'll see that this process cannot be shortcutting. It, it cannot be backfilled with, eh, close enough is good enough. It just isn't. Again, you don't have to take my word for it. I've also provided a primer by Koppelman and Page, they're now known as KP Law, they're one of the leading providers of public sector law, municipal law. Take a look at that, it, it echoes my results and contradicts Town Councils as well. There's also another document which I provided, Massachusetts Streets and Ways for Surveyors, 2011, and it also goes through the process and the statutory requirements. Basically what the town doing is, is opening it, opening itself up to, to challenges and, and going through a process improperly. And if the Board does vote to accept or to acquire the deed, which again, the town didn't vote on and, and I position, and Town Council's letter actually never speaks to that issue, you'd be accepting it with, without town authority and, and violation of, of state law, so...
Well, I, I 100% agree with you on the deed issue. The rest of this is a little over my pay grade.
But you're the vote.
Well, I know I'm a vote, but I'm also...
So maybe do some reading on, that I've provided, I provided on Monday and I don't know if you got it today. I'm not asking the Board to take any type of vote today. And, and here's the other thing, there is no vote on the agenda today. You have 120 days to accept the deed, that's another statutory requirement. You're running out of time. If you want to act on this, you had 120 days from the close of the town meeting.
Eldon.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm not opposed to developing a process moving forward for future developments, but I think it's time that we move on from this issue. We have an opinion and advice from Town Council. I'd like to make a motion that we move on, we do not authorize Town Council to spend any more funds on this issue and move forward with the deed process.
I know there's been considerable amount of money being spent in there, and that's one of the reasons why he's not here tonight. And when he wanted to get on the agenda first, I said, and then I said, no, you know, I've always had an open forum here to, if there is a problem there, you know, I want people to come in with their input, like he did, and that's where we are. Is there a, a second to that motion? And before we, we take that, I, our administrator over there, what, what would your, (sigh) ...
So...
... tell me of this right now, you, you've had, you've had both sides here and...
Mm-hmm. So, I came back to work yesterday from vacation.
Right.
And I was meeting with 200 pages to read, so, so I did it. And I did that today, and so, just a couple of things because I want to make sure that Selectmen raises questions are answered. The L'Oreal case that I did the research on today was in 1961, it refers to a taking that happened in 1929. I've had a conversation with Town Council about it. The reason the dates are important is because his opinion, right or wrong, but his opinion is, is that the Subdivision Control Act now supersedes the original law that we're discussing, which was originally written in 1693. And therefore, L'Oreal could never have discussed the Subdivision Control Act because it was in reference to what happened in 1929. And the reason that's important to note is because, as John's information provided, it says, "One safeguard against inconsiderate or capricious action on the part of municipal authorities is to make sure that a process is followed." The point being is that because there was a land taking and that we're going to separate somebody from their individual private land rights, there must be a high bar. When it comes to a subdivision that is being voluntarily provided over to the town, that bar has changed under the Subdivision Control Act. Again, I understand that's not John's position, that's Town Council's position. And I would ask if we could just turn to page 106 on this, Lorna?
Sure.
106 in the meeting packet?
Yeah, 106 in the meeting packet. You'll see in the very bottom, Section 24 of General Law, Chapter 82, requires that the Selectmen adopt an order of taking for the layout within 120 days. That's exactly what John's referring to, there was no vote at town meeting to do that. Except, obviously, this is not required if the way is, if the town is going to be giving it to it as part of a private subdivision. That's what happened here. So that's why Town Council is taking that position. So, you know, we have, we have a town meeting approval, Town Council has informed us that he believes that the process in reference to subdivisions was followed. If this was a private road, or certainly a taking, but if this was a private road that was not part of a subdivision, his belief is that John would be entirely accurate. Again, I'm not a lawyer, we can only go by what he is telling us, but he has spent a considerable amount of time on this. I have followed up with him both yesterday and...
I have followed up with him both yesterday and today, and he still feels strong in his position.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the subdivision control law was adopted in nineteen fifty-three. L'Oreal case was decided in sixty-one. It took consideration of the subdivision control law. The taking aspect that, that he's referring to is not an issue at this case. However, L'Oreal also does hold that all of the requirements, including the notice and the vote and the notice to the town clerk, are requirements. None of those were met. The reference to the acquisition of, of the property following the town vote, that has to do with MGL eighty-two twenty-four, and yes, it refers to taking, but it also, and once again, that's only half of it, there are other references to that particular statute. And if I may read from the actual statute, "If it is necessary to acquire land for the purposes of a townway or private way which is laid out, altered, or relocated by the Selectmen." All right? Not just a taking. The taking is only a subset. It has to do with all of it, the acquisition of the land. And whether it's a taking or not, you need the town vote to give you that authority. And you don't have it.
But you said, you said that started with, "If it is necessary." I almost hear that as synonymous with taking.
No, no. It said, it doesn't say, "If it is necessary to take." Says, "If it is necessary to acquire."
It's not necessary to acquire this.
Yes, it is.
We're doing it voluntarily. I mean, there's no, there's no imminent need for us to take this as a public way. They came to us at a request. There's no, there's no, and that's, I'm, I'm hearing there some necessary, you know, whether it's widening a street or doing something along that way, but I, that's not the scenario. So, I'm not seeing how that applies.
Is, is the town attempting to purchase land?
We're being asked to make a private way a public way.
Eldon, we have a motion on the floor.
And to, and to?
I think we discussed it enough here. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a mo-? Would you repeat the motion again?
Well, I, I would like, I would like to answer the question that was put to me, if, if that's all right.
All right, go ahead. And then that's the last question.
Okay, that understood, Mr. Chairman. The town will be acquiring land, and they'll be acquiring it by purchase. It doesn't have to be a taking. The acquisition of land is taking place. Is a deed changing hands? Yes or no? Yes. That's an acquisition of land. So, it requires the town vote, and that didn't happen. So, that's, that's my answer. I, I mean, I can't advise you any more than what the SJC has said. Go ahead and do the reading. The, the dates of sixty-one for L'Oreal, post-date, the fifty-three subdivision plan. So, that argument is, is made moot by, by other case laws. So, good, good luck and thank you for your time.
Okay, the motion on the floor is a second.
Could Anthony repeat the motion?
The motion was to not authorize Town Council to spend any more funds on this specific issue and to move forward with the dealing process or whatever other process we need to move forward.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Hey, John. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Accept meeting minutes of August twenty-first.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
B, accept minutes of September fourth.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Both of these are for review, so just.
Right, right.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so voted. Zoning Board of Appeal, Act on a Perspective Appointment.
So, we had a vacancy due to a resignation for an alternate position.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone.
For the zoning board of appeals. We placed the town on notice at our last meeting. In the meantime, we have one applicant, she is in the room. It's Ms. Colleen Maloney, so I, my guess of the Board would like to talk to her, discuss it with her, and then if you're so inclined, then I would ask you to take a vote.
Good, Colleen, how are you? Welcome.
Good, how are you guys?
Very good. Do you like to say anything or?
Um, yeah, I, as Dave said, I saw that there was an opening on the Board. And obviously, I, you know, live in the town and have always lived in the town and think that it's important to get involved. I think zoning is one of those niche issues that play a lot to the economic development and balancing that with the residents of the town is important. So, I'd love to serve.
Oh, and like I said, I made the appointment for the South East, and it's certainly worked out for you, and I'd love to have you serve.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Colleen.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you got it.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Got to get sworn in down with the town's clerk's office, though.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mrs. E.
Well, thanks, Colleen. Good to see you again. All right, petition civil service vacancy for full-time police officer. We go through a procedure here and, uh, is there a motion to, uh, fill this vacancy there or he wants a full-time police officer? We gotta go. Just, that's the procedure.
All right, so this would, the motion we'd be looking for is to call for the list with the civil service in order to be able to attempt to fill a position on the, for a patrolman.
Okay.
One or two?
One.
All right. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Construction of weak proclamation request from the Daughters of the American Revolution.
So, we have not received this in the past, but this organization informed us that this is Constitution Week. I asked Lorna to do the research, which she did, in reference to what the federal law was. We've highlighted it for you. Basically, they're just asking all cities and towns to do a proclamation acknowledging the fact that this is Constitution Week, based on the fact of what we saw in the federal rules and guidelines. There seemed to be no reason not to do it. And being that, so if the Board is so inclined, then I would just ask you to read the proclamation and sign and approve it. If not, again, you're not under any requirement to do so, but, so a lot of other city in towns are doing it now, so that's why I just placed it on the agenda in that spirit.
How does the Board feel about that?
Do we need a vote on this?
Technically, you really don't need a vote, but sure, you could take a vote that, I would just say, "Be it resolved," and I would just read the, that part, "We, the Board of Selectmen," and then vote on that, and that way you guys can sign it afterwards.
I just don't feel like reading it.
I'll read it. Do you want me to read it, Eldon, or you have it right there?
Were there second to proclamation?
No, that's not it. That's a different one.
So, just read from a resolved, David.
Have you, you must have it in the computer there.
Resolved, "We, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater do hereby proclaim the week of September sixteenth through the twenty-second as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigil- boy, stuck on that word, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, in witness whereof we have hereon to set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of West Bridgewater to be affixed this eighteenth day of September two thousand nineteen."
And that a motion?
This is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so a B. Communication reports from Boards, Commissions and Town officials. Is there any out there? Correspondence from the public, determine the course of action. Public comments, period. Anybody wish to, wish to speak? John?
Hey, I have a question.
What do you have?
In regards to the deed process, what is the plan you intend to follow in regards to Pearl Road?
So, I mentioned it at our last meeting, John. I'm still not, we, we saw what was supposed to be a preliminary or aid in agreement for the deed, and it was given to us in short time, not enough time to read and understand it all, and I'm really concerned about the shared septic system and whether or not there was enough verbiage built into that. So, what I had said to David as well, I'd like to have both our conservation agent and our planning board here to discuss that with us. And then the deed be written accordingly with any provisions thereof that may be required.
Has any title search been done on this particular piece of property?
I.
Don't know a title search, Dave. Are there concerns? Are you concerned there may not be a clean title?
It's usually one of the things that's provided by a petitioner under one of these policies that the title search is done. Utility easements, has that been addressed? And the town would be accepting those utility easements, which was not voted on at a town meeting. Has that been analyzed?
Not that I know of, but do you have any concerns that there, is there something you know?
I'm, I'm asking questions of what due diligence has been done in regards to what, in fact, we are accepting.
I.
And because there is no report on file with the town clerk, we don't know, and we don't know what we voted on at town meeting.
Okay, but again, we did, the understanding is that there was a vote taken subject to a deed agreement. We've not gotten to the point, we have not reached the point where we haven't agreed upon deed.
Right, that's the third step.
Right.
But even, even to get to the town meeting vote, we, as the town vote, were not fully informed as to what exactly it was we were voting on. Because no notice of the layout of converting a private street to a public way was filed with the town clerk.
So.
So, so I'm, I'm asking questions about what it is that is going to happen.
Well, I think what you've also done is mentioned elements that we should consider in the process of working out the deed. And I noticed David was writing that down, so I'm sure there are areas we're going to make sure cover it. But please, if you know something, tell us.
Are, are any of these pieces of land under mortgage?
What do you mean, the roadway?
Under the fee derelict statute, your ownership goes to the center line. So, where's the mortgage clearance coming in if the town's acquiring this, this land? And again, it is acquiring this land. So, has, has that been researched?
Well, that would obviously be part of the deed if there's a mortgage on the property. And I mean, all this, I think, will be done during this process, and if there are any issues, then we simply won't sign the deed if, if there's reason not to with easements or outstanding loans.
Well, the, the point I'm, I'm making.
In other words, it's still going to have to go through the, uh, process, John, or whatever the process they go through and make sure that we, you know, we get a clear deed there too, you know?
Understandable, but again, that town meeting vote never took place. Easements, any of that. So, again, there's no authority.
But if for a moment, as difficult as it is, you go with David's gay, David Gay's logic on this, at this point, we still have time to establish certain actions that need to be taken, and you've mentioned some.
I.
Are there others?
I'm, I'm unwilling to accept that position only because it is clear black letter law from the SJC to the contrary. There is no getting around it. The subdivision control law doesn't grant the authority that David Gay says it does. The timing doesn't matter. L'Oreal has not been overturned and is still being applied to, to cases to this day stating that all those requirements need to be met. They are mandatory. They are not suggestions, so.
So, in the alternative of you considering it under that view, is there anything else that you think we should be looking at prior to negotiating this deed?
I would make the suggestion that you review the three policy proposals that I submitted, not proposals, but policies that have been accepted by other towns, and, and see how it is being done. See how they are only taking an easement. See how they are ensuring that the town wouldn't have had to spend all that money for Town Council if it had been done properly. Because right now, if there was a court challenge, this town would lose. I would guarantee it. And other municipal lawyers that I've talked to reviewed that letter and said, "I don't even know where that's coming from." And, and again, don't take my word for it. Take the documents I provided, read them. They are contrary to what is being said, so.
Okay, I don't, I think we've talked enough about it tonight, and I want to leave it there. So, thank you for coming in and, you know, we've been also helpful in a lot of other ways too, John. And, you know, it's not that we're against of anything there, but we, we still, if there's any questions on the deed there, we'll try to work them out, okay? Thank you. Okay, moving along, Town Administrator's Report.
Yep, just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. First, it's an update on the debris in the access road. I visited the property twice over the last two days. The debris is still up there, as it has been in the past. The owner had communicated with our Board of Health person, our Board of Health agent, that he would begin cleaning up the road effective yesterday. He did place a dumpster up there. They did put some debris into it, but quite frankly, they filled up that dumpster pretty fast.
Yeah.
In the most of the road now, I mean, I'd say that, you know, it filled up two percent of the debris.
No.
So, with that said, the health agent reached out to him again today. He did not hear back from him. He was pretty disappointed because the information we had from the owner is that it would have been much further along than it currently is. The Board of Health has already declared it to be a public health nuisance according to what Mr. Casper has told me. And so, the next course of action is that he will have to initiate litigation.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, thank.
Before, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I forgot a document I wanted to submit to the Board. This is a West Boylston planning, if, if it pleases the Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
This is a West Boylston planning, and you'll, you'll notice basically the first sentence that they lay out in that regard. And I'd like that added to the meeting for tonight as well to, to.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you.
So, they've declared it public health hazard or nuisance, whatever, public health nuisance. What's the next step?
Well, the next, the, assuming that the Board of Health determines that the owner has been non-responsive, the next step is to go to Superior Court, file a, a, a claim, and then bring that person into court and compel them through a court order to clean up the road.
Have they sent any notice to him, giving him a deadline as to when to have this done by so that we can avoid the court action?
Uh, I don't believe that it's been done in writing, although I could be wrong. I believe that it's all been communicated verbally, but again, I could be wrong.
Could we maybe, you know, encourage the Board of Health to, to set a time firm for this to be done?
Sure.
I mean, it's been going on since March.
That's been going on a long time, yeah.
At least. And it, it's only become progressively worse. We have no clue what's out there. There's animals out there now, and if it goes on much longer, there'll be snow on the ground, and that'll be the next step for it not being done. So, I, I know it's out of our realm, David. It's totally their decision, but I think it sounds reasonable at this point to set a ten-day deadline for it to com- for it to be completed. And then if it's not, then the next course of action is going to court.
Okay.
Has he got anything? No, I think David has one more item.
Yep, and the only other item on it is, again, according to the policy, the Boosters Club had a car washed this past weekend. We signed off on it.
Okay. Anything else to bring up before?
I'll make no motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.